Good evening and welcome to May, finally, with some nice weather. We're going to call the council work session meeting to order at, I guess, 6:21. Want to welcome everybody to the Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. During this session, no action is taken in the making of motions or approvals during the work session. With that, we'll go, well, we won't go because we don't have the trivia question tonight. Mr. Brineer's not here yet, so we'll move on if he makes it in time, we'll go back to it. Under special presentations, we have items timed out for 55 minutes. We had our Cali-Ran Park Committee Chairperson online here, but we aren't able to pick up her voice, so we're not sure. We had this issue, I think, at our last meeting, and hopefully, we can get that corrected here sooner than later, but it won't be tonight. So with that, we will move into the EV charging stations for the north lot.
You want to give the update, Tony?
Yeah, there really isn't much to this. At the last meeting, we, you know, I think we mentioned in a memo to everybody here that the EV charging stations, the new ones that we purchased were, they were in for about two days before they were blown out by that subsequent storm that we had in early April. The question was, is do we go back and repurchase? We did speak to Clipper Creek, it's a company in California where we purchased the EV plugs, and they offered to fix them, not charging the borough any labor cost. All we need to do is take them out, send them out to them, and then whatever the parts, it's probably only one part for each one, whatever that part costs is all that we're going to be hit for in that process. So we're going to, that's what we're probably just going to go ahead and send them, ship them out.
So that was going to be, what, total $3,200, or did that change?
It would have been 30, too, if we would have purchased new. We don't, they said they really couldn't give me an estimate until they looked at it, but if it's not minimal, then if it's more than a few hundred dollars, we'll probably bring it back to council, but that's all we're anticipating.
Anybody have any questions on that update? I noticed the covering was off of one of those units yesterday, the bag over top of it.
If he took the bag off, then it may be that he actually took the unit out. I mean, last we saw, he had the bags on him while they were not operational.
If there's no other discussion, we'll get back to our trivia question. Councilmember Brineer, what do you have for us tonight?
My trivia question. I emailed it to myself.
If you're not ready, we'll just move on.
All right.
We're going to go into short-term rental draft ordinance. We've tried to break this down for review into smaller sections. For each work session, we allow 45 minutes. We may cut this meeting a little bit shorter for an executive meeting before the main meeting starts this evening, so maybe around 7:15, we may break and go into exec commission meeting and then come back to our main meeting, keeping that in mind, and they call at 7:15.
All right. Well, I again, let's see. So for this work session, I prepared a memo for you that went through some research that was done regarding some PA Supreme Court cases. And what was discovered is that, as you've hopefully had a chance to read in your memo, that when you're talking about zoning, where you have the zoning as the primary use in a residential district, being a single-family home, in those situations, it is not appropriate or even permitted to have non-owner occupied, or what we're calling exclusively transient short-term rentals. And I put in your packet the example of the Supreme Court case between Slice of Life LLC versus Hampton Township Zoning Hearing Board for the public's edification. I don't even know if I'm using that word right. So that was a PA Supreme Court case where a LLC had a exclusive transient property. The LLC was a New York City property investor, had this LLC, did not live there, did not have that as their primary residence. And to make a long story short, this went back and forth on whether it was permitted in this case, went to the PA Supreme Court, and they upheld that it was not permitted because in their residential district, as in ours, in the R1 district, in the R2 district at least, we have listed as the first primary use, single-family unit slash dwelling. So for that reason, I'll also add that in our R4 district, we don't have that listed as the first primary use, although it is also a primary use, it's just not the first one listed. So it doesn't explicitly list single-family detached unit as the primary use in the R4. So for that reason, after reviewing the court cases for Slice of Life, we've determined that it would be a violation of the borough zoning ordinance to allow exclusively transient slash non-owner occupied short-term rentals in the R1 and R2 districts. So my recommendation, like, moving forward, is for me to not approve those that come in because they are not permitted in our zoning. And in fact, as I mentioned here in the memo, I think that the borough opens itself up to litigation, to being sued, if they allow an exclusively transient, non-owner occupied short-term rental, because that violates the R1 and the R2 primary use. So until we can figure out an ordinance, that is my recommendation.
Gina, remember from the memo you said that that was all new?
Right. And then, yes, and then in the memo, I said, regarding the ones that already exist, I would solicit our borough solicitor input on what we should do about those.
I agree. Let me just add, follow up with Gina. The case that she's speaking of was, I guess, decided in 2019. We didn't even know about it, but our solicitor referenced it in his legal opinion in 2021, almost a year ago, dated April 21. In his opinion of the draft, which, you know, is available, was in, actually, in the last work session handouts that Gina provided, his, our solicitor's legal opinion referenced that case. He has other words about the draft, as its legality, but he specifically referenced that case and whether the borough could go in the direction that the draft was written. Pretty much, the borough solicitor said it's properly drafted. I know you're getting questions about the constitutionality of the draft and what you can do, what you can't do, but it's already been decided. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court has already decided what a, where a transient, exclusively transient unit can be placed. It's already been decided. Zoning has been around for decades, including here in the borough, we've had it for decades. It's already been tested in the courts, whether it's constitutional or not. Now, it's up to council, or at least five members, how much you want to change zoning, allow for zoning, amend zoning, those kinds of things. We're just telling you what the courts have said today, or what we're aware of, and then it's up to you to decide where you want to go from here.
Yeah.
Is it okay to ask?
Oh, sure. Yes, that would be perfect.
Great, thank you. So this zoning has been, I'm just trying to clarify things. So the zoning has been around for a long time, and it's been zoned that way, and that's what it said. But then, we said it was okay for these short-term rentals, that nobody lives there, we said it was okay.
Right.
And so...
May I clarify?
Yes, please, please.
We have no ordinance on the books today, or even five years ago, 10 years ago, there's no short-term rental ordinance on the books.
Okay, okay.
These things have come into play. This new use, which didn't exist sometime in the past, came into play.
Okay.
What, the only thing we had on the books, when these things came into play to Bellefonte Borough, was a rental housing permit process.
Okay, okay.
That started in Bellefonte around the late 1970s. If you have a space and you rent it out, you have to get a permit. That seemed logical at the time to apply that to this, these units, because we had nothing else on the books.
Got it, okay.
That's what happened.
Okay.
Similarly, the townships around us, around Penn State, were starting to deal with the same thing. This use was never there, then it showed up. And then they started to adopt these ordinances like we're looking at, and most of them have already have something on the books. But we're doing what everybody else is doing, trying to get caught up. It happens in life, you know, when there's incidents in society, just like we heard in Pittsburgh, you've got to go back and look, and now it's unfortunate, but now you've got to get something on the books, and that's where we're at right now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this is very, this is still a very relatively new thing for townships and municipalities. I just got a call today from a council member at Phillipsburg Borough that wanted to know, they're looking to adopt a short-term rental ordinance because they have the prob, not, I shouldn't say problem, they have Airbnbs in their borough that are, that are not regulated. They're, you know, there's not, there's nothing, there's no ordinance on the books that tells them how to operate. And so, you know, this is happening all over, it's happening locally. As Ralph said, there are many boroughs or municipalities that have adopted a short-term rental ordinance, and now it's our turn to do so.
In reference to Stan's question, if this ordinance, I know the ordinance hasn't been around, but the zoning for residential 1 and 2 has been around.
Yes.
So my question to you is, why were we approving what was already on the books?
Let me clarify.
What wasn't on the books, but it was the R1s?
We approved them as a residential rental unit. The Supreme Court clarified in their decision, an exclusively transient unit, house, whatever it is, a house, does not belong in the residential, single-family districts. We did not have that case, we did not even see it, it wasn't even, it didn't even exist till 2019. We found out about it through our research and our borough solicitor. It didn't exist when these, some of these folks came in and said, hey, we got this thing we want to rent out, what do you want us to do? Do we need a permit?
Which brings me to, my simple mind is, well, it says here it's residential only, so a short-term rental would not fit that, in that description.
We did not have a definition of short-term rental. All we had was a rental, a property you're going to rent out. There is no definition adopted by the borough as to what a short-term or long-term rental is. All we knew is, if you rent it out, you need a permit.
So they made the best decision?
Even today, there's no definition of what a short-term rental is. It's less than 30 days, because how do I know that? That's what everybody else adopted. They created the definition, and everybody followed it. So if you're going to stay somewhere less than 30 days, it's called a short-term rental. We did not have a definition to follow or look at.
And that, it was adjudicated in the year 19, but it could have been in the courts, it was in the court system for years.
Yes, yes.
So there was no decision-making, the final decision by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court wasn't in 2019, 2019, but it was in litigation for four years before that.
Yeah, it literally was going back and forth and clarifying whether the use had to be stated in the ordinance, and they clarified, the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania also said, if it's not listed, it's not allowed. That question was asked, and the Supreme Court clarified it, saying if it's not listed, it's not allowed, instead of the other way, where you've got to list everything that's not allowed, because that was the other argument. The Supreme Court said, no, it's the other way. If it's not listed, it's not permitted. We did not, nobody knew that till the earliest would be April of 2019, when the case was decided.
So Ralph, what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, the permits that we have been making for the last three or four years technically should not have been made based on this case. However, we knew nothing about this case.
Only the exclusively, just to be clear, we're talking about non-owner.
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, that's what we're talking about, and yes, that's where we're at, and yes, that's what Gina's recommending, get some legal advice, where do we go from here? Randy has some notes, you know, do you offer a grace period? Do you let them run till they no longer, till they give up the permit? I'm not the borough solicitor, I, you know, we can't answer that. We're recommending get legal advice for the ones that are established.
Well, I had sent out, I went over the citing and operating requirements, and I sent it out to council members over the weekend, trying to put things in line as to how they occurred, or where they should sit in here, I don't know, I'm not, I'm just trying to pull things and trying to put them in areas that look like that's where they would fit. But if we're going to take any of this and redo the proposed ordinance using some of this, then I would have staff to put those in appropriate locations, so it's not all over the place.
Sure.
Can I mention one thing, a quick brain, before we dive into the ordinance? I did want to just also mention that included in your memo, I've been getting asked a lot, how many STRs are there? How many short-term rentals? How many non-owner occupied? How many? I want to clarify, I have no idea. However, in the year and some change that I have been here, I have been keeping track of them and trying to get a hold of what's out there. And I included in your packet what I have done in my database, and I have, I think it's 22 or 23, I don't want to spend the time counting right now. And I do want to mention that of those, there are four currently in violation, three of which I found illegal just last week, Monday and Tuesday. So each week, I could be finding, like, new illegal rentals, which I will do, so anyone in the public is listening, I will find you on Airbnb. But I wanted to, you know, give you some actual figures here. So I'm sure that there are more than 23 out there. This doesn't include apartments, so I can't really get a handle on if somebody's a tenant and they're renting out their apartment. I can't get a handle on that, you know. Of those 23, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 that are non-owner occupied, so a little less than half. And of those, there are, of those nine, there are two that are borough residents, for what that's worth, you know, so that may, and you're deciding how to, you know, modify the ordinance or, you know, change it, just wanted to give you that information there.
Along with that, then, you also noted that you had Center Region Code send out 20-day notices to those people you found.
Right. And so I would hope and expect to get rental applications from them. And they were, except for one, they were all owner occupied, so there is only one that I will be letting them know that they cannot do a short-term rental.
The three, the three that you said, if I heard you right, Gina, that you said were illegal, can you tell us what was the, why are they? Why is it?
Well, one of them, I think two or three, you know, the, sorry, yeah, they, I just found them on Airbnb and Verbo. And so what I do is, I find them, I check to see if there is an active rental permit. If there's not, then they're in violation. So that's the coordination between Center Region Code, they'll send out a 20-day notice. It's just easier if I let them do it than for me to contact them and be, you know, telling them, hey, I found your short-term rental. So usually, it's just me finding them on those sites. And then there is one that, and this has happened on a couple of occasions the past year, there is one that was operating illegally, got caught, then applied for rental permit, didn't want to do the changes that was required by code to operate a rental, withdrew their rental, but then still did a short-term rental illegally. And then, some, they get away with that maybe until they get caught again, and that's what happened last week with one of them, they got caught again. Yeah.
Is there a fine if they're found to be running illegally and don't get a permit and get up to date on that?
Yes, it is $300 a day.
Okay.
For every day that they rent without a permit.
Okay.
So first, the 20-day goes out, and they get an opportunity to contact code and submit a rental application, and then after that 20 days is when, and this is all stated in their letter, but after the 20 days, if they don't reach out to code, that is when the $300 fine kicks in.
Okay, thank you.
And just got to follow up on that, so basically, you have been having to find out that they've rented it for three days, maybe get a $900 fine, or would it be every single day until the permit gets?
Yes. Ideally, the fine would stop them from renting it, you know, but I mean, that really hurts, obviously, that would hurt somebody who has a long-term rental, rental then, rather than a short-term, but it has happened in both cases. Yeah, did I answer?
Sort of, so, let me, let me get concrete for a second.
Okay.
You have a person who's doing a short-term rental.
Yep.
They only rent out, like...
Oh, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, or something. Yes, that would be 300 times three, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But then they would be charged for the days that they're not renting.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Good question.
If there's no ordinance on the books, assuming they have a permit and are legal in that respect, how are they in violation?
They're not.
The one she's speaking of have no permits.
They have no, they're operating without a rental permit.
Okay.
Now, not to confuse things, but there is a column here that says registered STR with the borough. All that means is, do I, have they, and this is, this would only be if they've gotten a short-term rental application since I've been here, because I'm just quote-unquote registering them. Right now, there's no ordinance, so it's more or less me knowing that they have, they have filled out a short-term rental application with me. So the ones that say no, but they do have an active rental permit, they just pre-existed me, so that's the only thing there.
So Gina, with that, when you started, and I have listed under citing and operating under item A, but starting on, I just have, I don't have a date, I just have X's there.
Yeah.
Starting on that date, no new short-term rental permits of a dwelling or portion thereof in zoning districts R1, R2 of the borough of Bellefonte will be allowed. This includes the running of amenities such as swimming pools, basivers, hot tubs, porches, finished basements, meeting rooms, et cetera. And that's what we need legal advice on. But you could still not approve anything until that legal advice comes back, correct?
No, that we don't, we don't need legal advice on that, but we need legal advices on is the already existing, non-owner occupied short-term rentals. I will no longer be approving non-owner occupied short-term rentals per the Slice of Life Supreme Court case.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, but I thought you wanted to still use legal...
Well, we want legal advice to get an opinion on how to appropriately handle the units that are existing, the purely exclusively transient units that we said through a housing permit could exist. We want to know how to appropriately handle those units. The, I want to just follow up with what Gina just said, and maybe what you were referring to. Entire draft ordinance, which is worded very similar to what you read there, Randy, was reviewed by our solicitor a year ago. The solicitor said, it's a two-page letter, he says it's appropriately drafted, something to that effect. He did not see any constitutionality issues with it. He gave us some advice on what, I think the word grandfathering should not be in there. That was his only advice. You know, so we can bring up that letter, it was just in your two-week-ago meeting packet, but the draft, like you just read, which, the draft is, in essence, is doing the same thing that Gina is saying today, not allowing the exclusively transient units in the residential districts. That's what the draft says, that's what Gina's doing today, and that's what the legal opinion is for.
So following up on that, when I went through your notes, Randy, and if we get down to C, if there's any residential zoning district probably currently permitted? if there's any residential zoning district probably currently permitted, I think it should have the date of the passage of this ordinance listed there, it's not there, but that's just a minor thing. The question I, and then it goes under the rental housing code and being used for a short-term, must the owner occupied at the permit request renewal and be owner occupied at least nine months per calendar year. I think this is another legal question related to what you're talking about. Does this mean that the short-term rentals currently within the district will be revoked after one year of passage? Or does this mean that they have, we have to create a non-conforming zoning exemption until the property is either sold and when the permit is not renewed?
We can zero in on that. I can, all I can tell you is that verbiage was in the draft, reviewed by our solicitor a year ago. Because that's virtually the draft that came from the Planning Commission, recommended for approval to Borough Council.
I think it's unclear.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's easy enough to go back and ask for clarification.
Yeah, I had a question mark after, in that same area, item C, that number nine, in quotations, and I put a question mark behind it, wondering how they got the nine? Were that nine, was it just something they pulled out, or was it somewhere they found?
I think it's, it's based off of other zoning ordinances. Some, like State College Borough is six months. And then there are other local ones that are nine, so I.
I have to agree, everything is out of, really, I think originated out of other municipalities.
So we can't change it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Now, just to, just though, to be clear, and I know this seems like an obvious point, but I want to make this. Nine months out of the year doesn't mean you live there nine months, but your address is somewhere else those other three months. So, you know, whatever, regardless of whether we do six months, nine months, it's still your only owner occupied if your registered address for voting taxes is at that borough address. So you may live in Florida six months and Bellefonte six months, but Bellefonte has to be your voting address, your tax address, if you want to be an owner occupied short-term rental.
Gina, I have a question about somebody who's a tenant doing an Airbnb. In what world would a landlord permit that since it's bordering on subletting?
Right.
And I think it's important to have something in here about the application from owner of the property and not the tenant.
I would agree, I think that that's a very important clarification. One thing I do, I have done now on new long-term rental applications that I get, is I say, where I sign off on zoning, I say may only be, I don't have the language right in my head right now, but basically can only be used for a long-term rental. Technically, by me putting that there, that puts the onus on the property owner to not let their tenant do a short-term rental. Now, again, monitoring that is the issue. I, like I said, I have no idea who is renting out their apartment in downtown Bellefonte.
Typically, a lease agreement between a landlord and a tenant specifies.
The sublease.
Specifies what the lessee can use the property for.
Yeah.
You know, earning income off of the room doesn't fit in there.
The other issue with, sorry, Ralph.
No, no, no.
The other issue with, so in case you don't know, on Airbnb and Verbo, they don't list the specific address. So it really is like a game of detective. I mean, Dawn and Ralph can attest, I mean, I have Amy Wagner, when she worked for Code last year, she and I would talk and we'd be like, do you, can you figure out where this address is, you know? Because sometimes they'll have pictures and you can, you're trying to figure out where the address is because they don't give it to you. I say that just because, one, this is a very time-consuming process to figure out where they are. But also, that's why I can't figure out the apartments, because, you know, there'll be an apartment listing and it's, it could be anywhere downtown. I can't figure out based off of their pictures where they are.
How would a potential customer, if you can't find out the location of the rental, how?
Does the person who's staying?
How does the customer find out? Is it after they submit a credit card?
Yeah, yeah, they'll get the address and.
I was just going to reference, you know, we have an insurance clause, which came out of the college township ordinance, our neighbor. I believe they put it in because they didn't want to have a concern if a house got trashed, you know, the tenant gave permission or whatever, and then there's a problem which falls back to the municipality to clean up. So, and we, you know, we're known for our older Victorian homes and all that. I think it's a good idea, the Planning Commission thought it was a good idea to have some requirement for insurance. But given that, you're not going to have a tenant have an Airbnb because you got to have insurance and that has to come from the owner, you know, who has to sign off and get all, give you that information. So, you know, you're not going to get insurance coverage on the house through a tenant, you're going to get it from the owner. But the whole idea of insurance, you know, can be debated whether that should be required or not. Some places do not require it.
Well, I would ask that of the solicitor, because I know before I bought my house, I regularly purchased tenant insurance. And I, and it allowed me to do many different things. I don't remember exactly what it did.
Yeah, you have, you have tenant insurance covers your belongings, but that doesn't cover the structure in case of a fire.
Yeah, I just want to have that confirmed, that's all I'm saying.
We can clarify that.
Joanne, some of them back, in the back there, having a little trouble hearing you.
Sorry. We unfortunately have a speaker system that's not working, so I'll try to speak up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyway, we were tasked with putting substantial changes forward this evening at the main meeting. And we have about 20 minutes to come up with some of those. Otherwise, we're going to be making any changes. I mean, that's just the way it is.
You're, you're under no pressure to provide. We just thought, since there'd be discussion in the work session, and we have, under the new rules adopted by the state, we have to list action items on the agenda, so we listed the possibility of, if you want to modify something or give us direction as staff, we'll take it back and rewrite it, bring it back.
Right, which makes sense. That's what I would like to do, is if we do modify it, it's nothing in stone. We're just modifying it to be redrafted.
Right.
And then we can continue to look at it.
Yes.
So, you know, I spent some time on this over the weekend, and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying it's perfect. And I just was trying to cover the bases that we can. So, you know, Gina, I added village, because you had mentioned adding village.
Right.
So I added that term in here. I'll just run down through here quick. We did, we already talked about A. B is short-term rental dwellings only permitted in central business, highway, village, commercial, and waterfront business district as of such a date. And then C was any resident or zoning district property currently permitted under the rental housing code and being used as a short-term rental must be owner occupied at permit request renewal and be the owner occupied at least nine months. And I have a question mark under that, after that nine months, per calendar year. And I also add that date effective under that. And under D, I have new applications for short-term rental unit permits located in waterfront, highway, village, commercial, or central business districts. Whenever the owner does not permanently reside on site, owner nonoccupied would not be present to lead guests to safe, to safety in case of an emergency. Automated, automated systems must be installed to provide and maintain public safety. And then it still lists those areas of emergency lighting accessibility. I changed consideration to improvement, put a question mark behind it. Fire suppression, secondary means heat grasp. And I added in red by code, and I didn't put Bellefonte code or Center Region code, so I wasn't sure on that.
Right, that would be, yeah, that would be Center Region code.
Putting it just simply as code.
Yeah.
Should have changed contract.
Right, right, yeah.
It fits both of them.
Then again, under, not item E, the only thing I added in that was highway slash village, added village. Under F, short-term rental permits shall renew annually and must comply with all current slash new regulations prior to permit being granted. Requires proof of compliance and ownership.
Excuse me, Randy, can we make some comments on these as, as we go here?
No, you can do it.
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate all the work you did on this, this is not easy to do. Reading through A, it really sounds to me like we are working towards stopping the short-term rentals. Because there will be no new ones, and then when they apply for a permit, when their year's up, do we still do the permit for those that are already, I'm confused about that.
It is because.
A and C confused me too, I think is what she's saying, like, starting on such, such a date, no new short-term rental permits of a dwelling in the residential area will be allowed. And then C says, any current permitted under the old rental housing code being used as a short-term rental must be owner occupied at permit request. So what it's saying is we're not allowing any new ones, but the ones that are currently running the short-term rentals, we have certain rules.
Well, I understand what was mentioned earlier, if it's owner occupied, it's allowed.
Yeah.
Well, yes, yes, so.
If it's non-owner, the new ones would not be allowed after a certain, whatever date this ordinance would kick in.
And, and that's due to the way we have zoning set up now, is that correct?
Well, it's been clarified, again, there's no ordinance on the books.
Right, right.
So we adopt that and we follow this ordinance, you know.
That's what we will follow, so.
Okay.
But I agree that the language of A makes it sound like no short-term rentals are allowed.
It's, it's very unclear as to, as to what, yes, exactly, what we're supposed to be doing with this.
Well, I'm saying in that, and I said it the same way that Gina had said it at the last meeting, that starting on such and such a date, no new short-term rental permits of a dwelling or portion thereof in any zoning district of R1 or R2 of the Borough of Bellefonte will be allowed. And that's what it is.
No new ones, so that means that the ones that are already.
The ones that are current are still there.
Right.
And we will maintain those, is that what you're saying?
I think, in my view, that's the fair thing to do because of how the history and what's happened. Until they, they'll, they'll eventually phase out, if people decide they don't want to rent it anymore, the permits are non-transferable, so the permits basically go away. And the owner nonoccupied has the choice of either renting it full-time or selling.
Right. Has there been any thought, and I did not see this anywhere, instead of kind of trying to phase this out, which is what this does look like, long-term,
Yeah.
is, why can't we adopt something where we only issue a certain amount of permits, keeping the people that have already worked very, very hard for their short-term rentals, either occupied or non-occupied, and select a number? And I don't know what that magic number is, we don't even know how many we have.
Right.
But I, I think that might be a better way to both serve the people that have worked very hard and also to serve our community, so we're sure we have really nice short-term rentals, either owner occupied or non-occupied, to serve people that are coming to Bellefonte. Because we do have a lot of tourists here, and I, I think it's a really good option for people.
It is, but then you go into zoning, and it would be nonconditional, it would be a nonconditional use to have the non-owner occupied remain.
I think we're getting lost a little bit, okay? So the way that this, the way that this ordinance was originally written was to zone out short-term rentals, whether they were owner occupied or not owner occupied, completely. That is what A is stating. However, since this ordinance has been written, there have been, there's been a whole committee that has been formed and collaborated and came up with recommendations for council. There's been a lot of talk amongst council. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think there was some consensus that owner occupied may be allowed. And it is, so what council, this needs to be rewritten. Because A is, A, the way it's stated, any new short-term rentals, regardless of whether they're owner occupied or non-owner occupied, they will not be permitted. And that's fine if that's what council wants to do, I just want to clarify, that's the way it's written.
Yes.
For, yeah.
I just, I'm a hundred percent agree with that, that's how the draft came from the Planning Commission over a year ago. And then, like you said, Gina, we, you know, council decided to get some input with the stakeholder group and so on. So, and I agree with the second part, the consensus seems to be allow owner occupied in some fashion.
In some fashion, we still need to cap or something.
Well, here's, here's the issue with that, and I'm going to retract this a little bit. This, all I, all I changed on A was a date to start.
I know.
No new short-term permits would be allowed. And that, it doesn't say in here whether it's owner occupied, non-owner occupied.
That's what I'm saying.
It would, it would, it wouldn't address each type.
I mean, unless we changed it.
Unless we changed it.
Right.
Because I didn't change the intent of that paragraph.
I know you didn't, I want to clarify what the original intent was.
Those who have it now would still be able to do that.
If they're, if they're owner occupied, right, no. If they're non-owner occupied, when they're up for renewal, they have to show residency in order to, that's the way C is written.
That's the way C is, but this isn't an ordinance yet.
I. Randy, but the way the Slice of Life Supreme Court case was issued is that I will not be.
She will not be able to issue any new permits.
Right, that's what I'm saying, new.
New, new permit.
But.
A new renewal of the permit, a new permit.
There's where I think we need to get the legal advice, which is where we started. Even though our solicitor a year ago reviewed the draft that says ban them all. Even though he reviewed it, I think it's worth another look.
And we could also put a sundown on it, say the existing ones expire in three years.
That's, that's what we're looking for from the solicitor. What, what have other communities, what, what's the courts say as to how to handle those ones that are existing?
This may seem like a simple question, but what constitutes owner occupied?
Owner occupied is if their voting address, their, their address of domicile, meaning where their voting address is, where their driver's license, that's a good one, yeah.
It has to be.
Taxes, that address.
It's identified in the draft.
Yeah.
Whatever we come up with, that has to go in there.
Stake card might be six months.
So Gina, so the concern is whether someone lives there or not?
Someone is a, is a resident, yeah.
Resident there, right, right. But when someone else stays there, and this is where I really get stuck on this, when someone else stays there, most of the time those people are leaving.
Right, that's.
So, so they're just, at that point, that house is just as empty of someone that lives there all the time as the other one is.
Right.
So I'm not really seeing what, what the, what the.
The difference is, if I, if I own a house in the borough and I leave for the weekend and I rent out my house, I leave and I go somewhere, I pack up my family, I go somewhere else, someone stays in my house for the weekend, they leave on Sunday, I come back. If I am non-owner occupied, I live in another municipality, might be another state, could be another country, probably not, hasn't happened yet. And this house in the borough sits unoccupied. My address is here, I live here, this is unoccupied, except there's a couple weekends or several weekends, I don't know, where this house is rented. There are people coming in and there are people going out. But it is empty, there's no long-term renter, there's no person, family, there's nothing that, there's no resident that lives there.
Right, right.
So that's the difference. Now, one of the things that council or I or whoever modifies this ordinance needs to put in here is, even if it's owner occupied, there should be a manager or however you want to word it, close by. So if I live in my house, but I'm leaving for the weekend, maybe my neighbor is my person, my point of contact. And who, you know, determined by how many miles away. Randy suggested 20, I personally think that's a little far, but I think it should be like within the borough. But there's, then there's that.
Okay, so, so couldn't the, the person? Okay, so, so couldn't the, the person who doesn't live there could also have a supervisor or a manager that lives in the borough as a contact person?
Sure, but that's not, so that's not, that's true, but that's not what the argument, I guess, if we're against a non-owner occupied, purely transient short-term rental is. It's not a matter of there not being a property manager. It's a myriad of things, maybe most notably that was brought up by the Short-Term Rental Committee is the potential loss of community. You don't have a permanent resident that's there that is potentially growing a family, or, you know, whatever the case may be.
Right, but if you limit the number of those, that would take care of that. I think it is, I think, I think that is an important part to this by far, but I also think it's important that people have a chance to run their business and do their work and serve the community. So I think there is a, and I realize there's a zoning issue with that, that, that we could address, but I think it's very important that we, we try to work through that, because I think it's offering a good thing to the community.
I, yeah, yeah. And I, I, there are, I would also say that there were recommendations, although there wasn't consensus from the Short-Term Rental Committee, there were recommendations that they had for council to consider, and that was one of them. You know, even regardless of whether it's owner-occupied or non-owner occupied, you still need to have a cap, a limit, a radius, you know? I mean, right now, they're sort of spread out, you know, I don't know, you know?
That's what, we're trying to address that.
Right.
So if we can, you know, at some point, just not have, if we're talking residential, and everything else is open for rentals, is fine. So the residential areas are what we're trying to massage into this, but still be fair to the people who have spent a lot of money putting these places on, out there for people to use.
Okay, well, how about the people who've spent a lot of money on their personal homes? You know, have we considered those folks?
I'm trying to, well, I'm trying to...
Yeah, let's just not focus on what they have spent to create a business in the borough, but let's talk about the folks who've taken these places that were worn down, used as a multi-rental unit, and converted them into a nice Victorian home. Let's talk about those folks, too.
We have, you know, we have residents come in, we get letters. I've been getting more letters from short-term rental owners than I have residents. So I, you know, I'm not trying to screw any resident out of, out of anything, and, you know, we want the places to look nice so that it doesn't affect the cost of the house's worth. I understand that. So when we keep talking about this rental non-occupied and renter occupied, there was never a definition of renter unoccupied.
I pointed that out in my presentation a couple weeks ago.
Put one in here on that back page.
Yeah, that one's fine. I also offered one in my presentation that I gave a couple weeks ago on the short-term rental. So I could kind of mesh the two and come up with something.
Which letter is that, please?
It's on the back end page.
It's on the back page of what I showed out. So basically what it says is, a short-term rental owner non-occupied is not required to live in a rental. The owner and the designated contact person must live within a twenty-mile question mark radius of the short-term rental. The owner is required to provide a short-term rental address, phone number of the owner, and the designated contact person for the purpose of contacting the owner or the designated contact person in the event of any complaint and/or emergency when police or EMS is, are called to the address. That's double, double up our system. Failure to do so because we're sending out the owner's rental permit and possible fines to the owner.
I think that some of that could be addressed in the ordinance itself, personally.
Well, it wouldn't be in the ordinance, I just didn't put it in. I'm just saying that was just an added thing I put on, that didn't where it should go.
Right. I just have non-owner occupied as a dwelling unit that's not the primary permanent resident of domicile of a person. Owner physically resides at the residence less than X number of calendar months a year, whenever owner is registered, so a different address, owner pays taxes. This is referred to, I think it should be in here, regardless of what definition we come up with, that this should be, a non-owner occupied should be defined as an exclusively transient home. Some municipalities call it a tourist home, you know? Making sure you're clarifying that it is exclusively transient. It is not someone that permanently resides there.
Related to that, in your listing, you had two properties that were owned by a borough resident.
Right.
Or, in one of those cases, it's the house next door to where they live.
Right.
I don't know where the other one is.
Yeah.
But in either case, would they be handled like owner-occupied or owner non-occupied?
That's a good question. That was not addressed in the draft ordinance, and it's up for...
I think you brought that up before, Joanne, and it was a property right next door to the property that you're referring to, and the quick response was, yeah, well, let that happen as an owner-occupied, because the real estate is right next door to the existing property. That's the way I recall it.
Well, I define as non-owner occupied as a different parcel of land, and the one that we're, the one that we're talking about is technically a separate parcel, has a different number, so, you know? But, but yes, you have two non-owner occupied, but they're borough residents. One is the adjacent parcel, and one is like a couple blocks away, or whatever. So that's a, that's a good question. What do you do about those two short-term rental owners? Do you treat them as...
Have we talked about the added stress it's going to put on our sewer system? You know, when the typical house that we're looking at is a three-bedroom home, and you, you put 10 to 12 people in a normally occupied residence of five to six people, and then all of a sudden, we double it for three or four days? And we have a set sewer rate right now, there is, it doesn't vary like the water rate does. So how much more stress are we going to put on the sewer? And also parking?
Parking's a, sorry, I don't mean to...
Well, I read Toby and Townships.
Parking's definitely an issue.
Yeah, they, their, their parking is...
Not to be selfish about this, but also, who, I mean, when you're talking about regulating short-term rentals, you have to collect lots of paperwork, the insurance, the documentation of the, how many stays, this and that.
I look at Lynn Street, and right now it's stressed parking just with residents. Toby Hannah, why can't I find it, marketing, parking. Parking, it even says they don't allow them on the street or the right-of-way. I didn't know you could do that. Outdoor parking for overnight and day guests shall be limited to available parking areas on the short-term rental property. In no event shall parking for short-term rental guests include spaces in any private, community, or public street right-of-way, or on any lawns or vegetated areas. That's, I'm surprised at that.
So what it has on the, on this ordinance is, all applicable off-street parking regulations must be complied with during the permit period.
But that doesn't restrict on-street parking?
Off-street.
So if you have a resident living in the, in the neighborhood, and it's already stressed for parking, and you add three to six guests with three to four cars, what happens to our borough residents?
What does off-street parking mean?
It means, yeah, in the property.
Well, that's all it says in there, I don't know, but...
So they come home with their groceries, and, and it's occupied by short-term rental?
I have a question mark after that.
Say, I just know that on football game weekends, I know that there's going to be two extra cars on my street. I'm not going to park over here. Or drop my groceries off, and then I park here, but then I have to park up there anyways.
You're carrying a kid out of the car seat, and you have to park a half a block away, it's no problem.
And that happens even with the people that live on my street. So, I mean, the guest house on my street...
So you add to that.
I get, the guest house on my street is well-maintained.
Okay.
There's, there's like never...
If you have no problem with...
I've never noticed any problem there, but I just know on weekends, even if, you know, maybe the neighbors have guests over to watch a football game. There's always going to be extra people on the street during the weekends.
Does that make it right?
Well, anybody can invite guests over and have a party to watch a football game. Either way, my street's going to get parked up. So I just know it's going to get parked up, and I can't do anything about that, because most of them live there.
And I think as part of this, this ordinance, we can address that to the point where this is what you need to do. I think everything's so unclear, at least to me in here, I would like to see this much more simple. Here's the permits you need, here's everything you need, they need to get it to you, you don't have to go look for it. We list everything.
Doesn't work that way.
Well, or they don't get the permit. I mean, but, and we list everything that we want the short-term rentals to do or not do, and then if you don't comply, here are the, here's what's going to happen, whether it's fines, or removal of your permit, or whatever. I think if we're just very clear about it, this could work very well, I feel.
Yeah, just keep in mind, anything that is, that is added, there is a severe element of monitoring and record-keeping involved in this. So keep that in mind. I will, I assume that that would be, that would be my role as the zoning officer, but I will add that I do other, like, this could, I could see this easily, you know, being a very significant portion of a job position. So, I mean, and I think that those things are why this ordinance was drafted as, some people call restrictive as it is, because it, there is a lot to consider by allowing them, whether they're owner-occupied or non-owner occupied. So if you choose to allow, even though owner-occupied, which would be a deviation from the original ordinance, then you need to decide how those are going to be regulated. What, my...
No, no, I'm just smiling. We should be saying proposed ordinance.
Proposed ordinance.
That's the draft.
Proposed ordinance.
That's true.
It's just you, right, Gina?
It is just me.
Well, you know, this, Delphont grows, other things should grow, that includes staffing here at the borough.
That would be...
So we just got to see where that takes us, and where that money's going to come from. Some of it's going to come from short-term rentals, because that's who's causing the increase. And the same should go for any rental that we have to expend our energies on from a staffing standpoint. So I don't think we're going to get much farther than we are right now until we get into the meeting and if we want to start, you know, moving some things into that.
I do have one question. It's a little broader than just short-term rentals. I don't know if this needs to go to the solicitor, but I thought I'd put it out. Is when we crafted and we redrafted the regular zoning ordinance, in R1 and R2, we said that we were trying to reduce the number of rental properties in the residential areas, and we had this clause that if they stopped using it for a year, they could not go back to being a rental, no matter what. So the question then becomes...
Well, not no matter what, they could reapply for rental permit.
Well, we're getting off, we're getting off stage right now.
Once you finish, we'll try to answer your question.
So my, my question is, is as I understood that, once, if they haven't used it as a rental property for a year, then it reverts back to a single-family dwelling for future use. It could then be done for rental properties as a single-family, but not as a multifamily rental property.
Right, I mean, yeah.
And so when we're looking at these short-term rentals, how does this fit in with that part of the zoning? That's all I'm asking.
Well, the committee, the committee recommend, I would, I would encourage you, and I can send it out again, I would hate to devalue the work that the committee did. So they, they recommended, one of the things that they clearly had consensus on was that these are not permits that carry over to new owners, okay, so...
That, okay.
Okay, so to...
But I'm saying, if someone were to have, if a multifamily unit becomes a single-family home.
Yeah.
What, and then this person wants to do it as a...
As a short-term rental.
Short-term rental, how does that fit in with the current ordinance? That's all I'm asking.
Right, well...
It's difficult, because it's...
That's all I'm asking.
Well, we have to address, we have to look into that, because...
I noticed there was, there was language in here referring to other rentals, and I don't know why it was there, because this ordinance was for short-term rentals, not long-term.
Right, right, that's what makes...
There's already an ordinance for this, so, after that. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at this time, and we're going to step into an executive committee meeting for about five minutes, and we'll have to start the meeting.
Are we going to get our questions?
Not now.
Good evening. My name is Randy Brackville. I'm calling to order the council meeting of, uh, May 2nd, 2020. We welcome everybody to the Balfont Borough Council meeting. We'll do our best to start our council meetings on time and end them on time. Do the room acoustics, please speak up when, when talking so people can hear you and what you're saying. All comments and reports shall be kept to three minutes maximum. At this time, we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a personal moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see it?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Brineer.
Here.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Mayor Johnson.
President.
Okay, item number four, additions to the council meeting agenda in accordance with Act 65 of 21. If a matter is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action on it, with some exceptions. The council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency, business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council should state the reason why the action item is being added to the agenda. Is there any additions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, we're running into our public comment regarding items on the agenda. Uh, the public comment period is reserved for oral comments regarding any action items listed on this meeting agenda or added by majority vote at the meeting. No deliberations will be entered into by the council at this time. Uh, please raise your hand, and when you come to the podium, please, uh, sign, uh, give us your name and address, and then you would have your three minutes to speak. So is there anybody who would like to make any public comments?
Are, are we able to speak about the ord, about the short-term ordinance now, right now, beginning?
Sure, yes.
Well, I do.
Come on.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Lucy Kelly, and I own a property on, uh, Curtin Street. So, uh, last council meeting, we had an unfortunate situation at the end of it, uh, where the Borough management felt it necessary to defend their position when they felt challenged against, uh, an STR owner. I don't think it's the facts Ms. Dropka disputed, but she was always acknowledged their property at, that it was hers. I believe the frustration lies in the presentation of a solitary issue requiring the authority involvement from four years ago that was handled quickly, yet is regurgitated over and over anytime someone needs to project STRs in a negative light. I have a concerns about the way my property was generalized as problematic, and I don't, I know I would be infuriated if my property was made out to be the delinquent of the community. I believe that while Borough management has the grand responsibility to protect it as citizens, it also has the responsibility to represent all residents and business owners fairly, and a resistance to projecting the worst-case scenarios as common or probable would be most appreciated. When I had the opportunity to move away from the area, I had the privilege to continue to operate as a non-owner-occupied property. This afforded me the ability to rent my home and return to it after my journey ended, and I'm happy to be back. I bring this to your attention because not everyone fits into the clean little box of investment, for-profit-only, hotel, or commercial properties that has been presented. I would like to also clarify that while not on the premises, I was not an absent owner. I visited or had a designated person visit the property often, cleaning and maintaining the home, all while engaging the neighbors I love so much. In your third meeting, concentrating on the proposed ordinance, council has a better understanding of how difficult to creating an ordinance is, and I want to help. A group of STR owners met this week to discuss the ordinance, among other things like best practices, safety, and what we are doing to ensure our business and homes have minimal effect on those around us. One thing we noticed is the continued lack of representation in development of an ordinance that surely affects us the most. Due to time constraints, this STR committee fell short of providing valid recommendations, and now it is in the hands of council. And with all due respect, many on council do not use the STRs for vacationing or own any, and therefore cannot have a full understanding of how the restrictions can affect the STR business model. It is difficult to hear the heavy restrictions proposed by the planning commission through the Borough Manager during the work sessions as a positive step without the opportunity to prove them detrimental. When the concern of the right-of-way plannings was discussed, council asked for a landscape architect for their expertise. That is what we're asking now, that you engage in conversation with our team of experts regarding the proposed restrictions and regulations. Our newly-formed group, the Balfont Short-Term Rentals, is ready to serve in this capacity. None of the concerns you discussed during the work sessions are unfamiliar to us, and we look forward to sharing our practices, as well as those on the web brokers have in place to assure safety, deter nuisances, and protect both community and our properties. Also, before deciding on things like the appropriate number of guests to home, please think about visiting some of the STR properties. Consider this a personal invite to tour my home and property. I would love to have the opportunity to assure you that while it was one of the smallest STRs, it is appropriate, and more importantly, safe for the number of guests that I have listed for, as a commodity. Please let us know if we can assist you in moving forward with a reasonable ordinance. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Lisa Dropkin again.
Need your address, too.
Oh, um, I have the Summit, uh, 1304 Summit Drive property. Um, I feel that you're really not getting a lot of the facts. Um, first, I would like to say that when I decided to open an Airbnb in Balfont, I came and talked to the zoning officer, and she encouraged and said that Balfont was having seminars, was looking forward, and thought that it was a great thing of the community that Balfont needed. So I took money out of my, um, retirement account, paid the, paid the, um, the fine for early withdrawal, and invested it in my property. So my question to you is, I made these decisions based on the recommendation of Balfont Borough, and now you want to change them. So I was planning on having my house for 20 years. Who's going to make up that income to me? Because I took Borough Council, er, the zoning officer at her word, that Balfont was a welcoming place for Airbnbs, and I followed every single rule, and I didn't hide it. I was very upfront and honest about what I was doing. The other point I would like to make is I have three properties in, in College Township, and when they changed their rules, it was not as, we were, I was not demified in Airbnbs. They called me, it was a 20-minute conversation, we came to an agreement. They, um, I am not owner-occupied, obviously I can't live in three places. They, they grandfathered, or whatever they, they call it, non-conforming youths. So it is legal to do. I have three of them in College Township. Um, so, and the other thing I'd like to say is, in College Township, they say if it's under 15, if it's, if someone stays 15 days or longer, you don't, not, they have a, they have an ordinance about how many days people can stay for the year. Then they have, if you're, if they stay over 15 days, that doesn't count towards your number. Okay? And then at the end of the year, I keep track of it all year long, uh, and I have to give them the dates and times that I rented. It was my responsibility. I make a sheet up. I also have to prove that I pay the, uh, the additional taxes, and you have to submit that, and then you get your reapproval. I mean, I don't think that it's, um, I mean, it's not laborious on me, so I don't know how hard it would be for someone just to check, yes, she rented for these many days, yes, this is a proof of her taxes, and, and that's, um, very sim, very, uh, similar. The other thing, I don't know if you guys realize how short the hospitals are in this area of staff, and so I have been very busy in the last couple of years with visiting nurses. And, you know, we need to have those nurses, and they need to, and they find it very difficult to find a place to stay. So they've been negotiating with Airbnbs to stay, and we need them at the hospital. I mean, obviously, they're paying them an exorbitant rate to stay, so we're serving that purpose. The other thing that people talk about being in residential neighborhoods, my houses are rented by people's family that don't have a big enough house. So they love it, that they come in and say, oh, I can be three doors down from my, my parents, and we can all walk back and forth. So a lot of the holidays, I am booked with Balfont people coming back to stay, can't all fit, they can't all fit with their growing families in their parents' house. So they rent an Airbnb close by, and it's, it's a win-win. So, I mean, there's a lot of positives that I don't feel anybody's getting to hear about the positives we do in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, so.
Next.
My name is Susan Farrow, and I live at 530 East Beaver Street in Balfont, and I actually live down the street from Councilmember Rita Purnell, and I want to follow up on an email that I sent to you last week. I run an owner-occupied STR. My guests come from a variety of states and countries. They come from all different walks of life, and they come to Balfont for a variety of reasons. Most of the time, I'm in town when my guests are renting from me. Sometimes I meet and speak with them all, other times I see them just in passing, and occasionally I don't see my guests at all. This is the third home I've owned in two different municipalities. For more than 10 years, in each of my three homes, I have operated Airbnbs with no issues, in large part because of Airbnb's review system. Using this system, guests and hosts review each other. This is a protective measure that ensures proper behavior by both guests and hosts. If a guest gives me a negative review, others won't rent from me, and if I have a problem guest, I will give them a negative review, and other hosts will not rent to them. Now, here in Balfont, my neighbors know that I operate an STR, and none of them, none of them have ever had an issue with my STR or any of my guests. One of my neighbors recently said to me, we've never had an issue with any of your guests. Trust me, if I had an issue, you would know immediately. Since I started my Balfont Airbnb, I have rented it an average of six nights a month, spread out over 12 months. That's 72 nights on average a year, and this year I plan to increase the number of nights I rent my STR more, more. I plan to increase it. Your proposed limitation of number of stays and the total number of days in a year seriously negatively impacts my business model. This is one important reason that the members of Balfont STRs need you to engage us. We need you to have a full understanding of the uniqueness of each STR in our borough. And in addition to the income that my STR brings me and the federal, state, and local taxes it generates, my guests routinely dine at local restaurants. Most of them get to my home, they drop their bags, and they head into Balfont for dinner. They eat out more than I do, and they actually give me reviews on where I should go out to eat. I have had nothing but positive experiences as an Airbnb host. I get nothing but excellent reviews from the people who rent from me. Whether or not you've stayed at an Airbnb, I urge you to speak with one of us STR owners. Visit any of our homes. Speak with us to find out what it's like for us to run our STRs successfully. And I especially urge you to engage us, Balfont STR members, as you create this ordinance for STRs that retains the character and increasing vibrancy of Balfont, that creates opportunities for visitors, and generates valuable income for homeowners like me, and tax revenue for Balfont. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments to items on the agenda?
Can I, can I very quickly clarify something? That I was not the zoning officer whenever.
Absolutely true.
Whenever Lisa's, uh, uh, short-term rental was permitted. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, moving on to communications.
Uh, yes, that's first idea or first action.
Okay, uh, so for the Trinity, Trinity United Methodist Church fundraiser, K5, in Governor's Park, on October 7th and 8th of 2022, I need to call for a motion and second to remove this item from the table.
So moved.
That motion by, just to basically second by Mr. Doug Johnson. At this time, then, I'll call for a motion and second to approve the 5K race scheduled for October 7th, 2022, in Governor's Park.
I think you need to have a vote on the move from.
Yes, I did. The movement went too fast again. Back to the motion on table, or to untable, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. So now I'll call for a motion and second to approve the 5K race scheduled for October 7th and 8th of 2022 in Governor's Park.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Brineer. Discussion.
Did we get all the needed information that we asked for?
Yes. Yes, we've got, uh, firm dates, times.
Good.
And the map.
The map, that's what we asked for.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to just make sure you were happy.
No further discussion. All those in favor to approve the Trinity United Methodist Church's 5K running Governor's Park on October 7th and 8th in 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
The next item is Almond's Key Shop, a business in the area or in the region, is purchasing the property at 146 South Water Street, or I believe that's, that may not be the exact address, but it's adjacent to a small municipal parking lot. Uh, Almond's is what was a motorcycle shop along South Water Street, approximately across from our Sculpture Garden in that area on South Water Street. Adjacent to that pro, that building, they have a little parking lot of their own. We have a little municipal lot, uh, and then there's a property, it's the old, what they call the old laundry building, I don't know what I'm talking about.
That's the one that.
Across from the Big Spring.
The one that, uh.
Melanie.
Melanie owns.
Melanie owns, and people who know us know what we're talking about. Anyway, this municipal lot may hold four spaces or something. As indicated in the letter, uh, you know, we, we purchased it probably around 1960. I don't know, but I assume it was for parking for the Big Spring at the time. Uh, we, we don't think we need it. You know, there's an interested party. Now, under the Borough Code, it says 15,000, but it should be 1,500. Anything over 1,500 of value needs to go through a bidding process or bid it out, and, you know, council can decide whether they want to sell it after that process or not. If you would like, we can go through that, advertise the property, see what happens, and then reserve the bid till you. see what happens, and then reserve the bid till you say yes or no as a council, if you're interested.
I can make that motion.
Okay.
So I'll call for a motion and second to put the property out to bid with the right to refuse any and all bids. Motion by Mr. Tosty Basie, I have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson. Discussion. Singing on all those in favor of the motion to put out the bid, the property valued at fifteen hundred dollars, with the right to refuse any and all bids, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is the YMCA wants to do their summer program. I think they said in their letter it's the twenty-sixth year. They run their summer programs out there at Governor's Park. They use three pavilions. Starts June 13th, goes through August 25th. Just looking for formal approval to do that.
I'll call for a motion. Motion and second to approve YMCA summer, summer programs, use of Governor's Park Pavilions 1 and 2 and 3 on Monday, June 13th, Thursday, August 25th, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Clayton. Purnell, Clayton. Discussion on the motion.
I want to clarify what the motion is. It's not every day from the June 13th to August 25th. It's every Monday through Friday during that time period. We need to make sure that that's what is understood.
Yeah, well, that's what the letter, what the intent was.
Right, so.
Yeah, because I'm looking at, I'm looking at what's on the agenda and not what's on the letter.
Right, yes. So I just want to clarify the order. It's just Monday through Friday of those weeks.
Any other discussion?
That is from 6:00 AM to.
Like 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Yeah, this, I don't have any time. It is, we'll attach the letter to that as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Singing on all those in favor to approve the request of YMCA summer program for the use, at Governor's Park, for the use of Park Pavilions number 1 and 2, and number 3, Mondays and Fridays?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. From 6:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That proves. All those, all those again, signify by saying aye. I didn't do the second.
Oh.
Letting people say no. Motion carries.
Next item, the Faith Center wants to do two things. They want to do their annual walk-run 5K on October 15th. In, through, starts in Tally Ram Park at Big, or at Big Spring Spirits, goes out, and then goes down South Potter to the 550, turns around, comes back, ends at Big Spring Spirits in the park. The same day, they would like to do a pooch parade, I believe they called it. And I believe that is all within Tally Ram Park and the new, the new area, the expanded area, also on October 15th. So they're looking for conditional approval just to save the date. And then we will meet with them and work, get all the details, and be back for formal approval.
Their, their letter does include a map as well.
Yes.
Make that motion.
I'll call for a motion and second to conditionally approve the date of October 15th, 2022, for the Halloween pooch parade. We have a motion by Mr. Bernier, don't have a second.
I'll second.
Who did that?
We both did.
It was.
China can have that one.
China's got the dog, she should have it.
Second.
That's what I was thinking.
Any discussion on the motion? Singing on all those in favor of conditionally approving the date for October 15th for the Faith Center 15th Annual Halloween Pooch Parade, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next item, CADA has some information. They're reinstituting Sunday services, and then they're extending their, some type of pass discount. What I would recommend as citizens interested in seeing what their, what the changes are, go to catabus.com for all the details. I don't know if Ms. Clayton wants to say anything. You seem to follow them pretty closely.
I don't have any information other than what's in our packet.
Okay.
The Sunday service would be the fixed route service in and around State College. It has nothing to do with the fixed route service.
I thought maybe the discount.
But the discount, fifty percent off a pass is a great deal, and it's good on any fixed route service and the CADA go transit.
Just when we're speaking, let's remember to speak up for.
Thanks. So that's that. The next item is Herbie's Hometown Loop request. Again, this is August, August 20th, 2022. We're just looking for conditional approval of the date. We will meet with the organizers of that event as well.
So I'll call for a motion and second to conditionally approve the date of August 20th, 2022, for the Herbie Hometown Loop. Don't have a motion.
I'll make the motion, Sedgwick.
Sedgwick.
I'll second. Purnell.
And Purnell. Motion by Sedgwick. Second by Purnell. Discussion.
What is it?
It's a, like a walk-run type race. 5K type race.
I thought they had the number of years. They'd been doing that for quite a while.
Yeah, might be in the letter.
Any further discussion? Singing on all those in favor of the motion to conditionally approve the date of August 20th, 2022, for Herbie Hometown Loop, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That motion carries.
Next item is Belfont Emergency Medical Services. Sent in a number of reports. I think from, in the future, if we get them this time, with the same for the next meeting, for the, which is like our typical report meeting. But they're there. If you have any questions, I can relay them to their director, Scott Root, or you're welcome to email him yourself if you would like.
And you may see these, the same report, August 3rd, September. It seems, it usually comes around annually.
Yes, he, he will be setting up the formal meeting at the end of August as well. Next item is the 2020, or 2023, 2026 Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization. As we call it, the TIP, which is Transportation Improvement Program. There, they have a program of projects scheduled for that timeframe, and they're accepting public comment from, basically, this past Friday, the 29th of April, through 5:00 PM, Monday, May 30th. It's important to Belfont for, we have two projects that are kind of working their way through a very complicated system. The one project is the, the replacement bridge on West High Street, right in front of the cafe, the My Buzz Cafe. That's, bless you. It's scheduled for 2026. It's, it's not like urgent, there's still a lot of unknowns. But the more important, or very important, is the, trying to either get a traffic light or redirected traffic pattern or street pattern around Mill Street and Phoenix Avenue, the Match Factory, American Philatelic Society area. Something that's been on the works for years, but we're slowly working our way through a planning process and trying to get to some environmental and engineering money, and then eventually construction funds through this program. So at, at minimum, we should write a letter as a comment, and we should ask Spring Township to join in or write a similar letter. Because, you know, as you, everybody knows, the Cero complex is being redeveloped. They have the same, similar issues with traffic patterns coming out of Mill Street and Water Street, 150. Wanted to make sure that that is addressed somewhere in the near future. So at minimum, I would say, we need to write a letter and add some comments.
May I add something about the High Street one?
Yes.
This is not the Veterans Bridge that Ralph is talking about. If you look at the train station and directly in front of Cafe Buzz, there's the race wagon that goes, is water that goes underneath the street. It is considered to be a bridge because there's water under the street, but there are no railings on the inside. That's what he's talking about. He's not talking about Veterans Bridge.
Correct. The railing's very cleverly disguised next to the general, the general store. Can't tell it's a railing. But that's where it is.
Another comment to that. We've been strongly encouraged by the MPO to make a strong statement supporting the TIP and the Phoenix Avenue redesign and development. So, yeah.
So.
Definitely need to write the.
Yes.
So since there's not on the agenda saying, will we want to have a letter written? Should we put that on the next?
We could. I could prepare, work on a draft, and get it formally approved. Get in touch with Spring Township as well. That's my plan to do.
And I think anything coming from the people back, that work back, back in Phoenix Avenue might also want to do some type of petition.
Yeah, very good.
Could be a short walk. Okay, so we'll come back to that next meeting?
Yes. That's all we have under written communications.
Okay. Under consent agenda, we have two council meeting minutes on here, so we'll do these separately. The first one would be for, well, actually, let's just see what happens there. I'll call for a motion and second to approve the consent agenda as listed, with the council meeting on April 4th and council meeting on April 18th.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Second by Doug Johnson. Discussion. Singing on all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as listed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. That takes us into reports. We don't have any reports this meeting. That's on the second meeting, but we do have some Harb information.
Wait, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mayor. We need to make that bigger.
My first report is my mayor spotlight. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to spotlight any current or past educator. Thank you for all that you do to provide to our youth an outstanding education within the Belfont Area School District and beyond. Your dedication to the teaching profession is greatly appreciated. And I have a proclamation. A proclamation, whereas the Borough of Belfont recognizes and values the dedication and entrepreneurial spirit within our community, and whereas small business are the backbone of Pennsylvania's economy, and whereas small businesses keep our community, the state, and America's economies growing strong, and whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs throughout the United States Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas the Borough of Belfont supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small business do what they do best, create jobs, and ensure our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, I, Buddy Johnson, Mayor of Belfont Center County, hereby recognize May 1st through 7th, 2022, as National Small Business Week in the Borough of Belfont, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which acknowledges and celebrates the achievements made by small business, both locally and nationally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And now, Ms. Fox.
I love this part.
Is that floor getting hot?
But is there, are there any questions about, I know that you're voting on it under Old Business, but are there any questions about the sign ordinance? I once again included it. I highlighted what are the significant changes. Everything's there for you. Just want to make sure there weren't any last minute questions before you, yea or nay that. Okay. And then, then just for Harb, there are three approvals, certificates for appropriateness. 203 North Allegheny Street, which is the historical museum. There's a porch replacement there. 136 South Water Street, there's some exterior renovations at that address. And then 308, 310 East Lynn, there is a roof replacement there, so.
Can we do these under one motion?
Yeah.
Now, I'll call for a motion to recommend approval for the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness for 203 North Allegheny Street for a two-story porch replacement. 136 South Water Street to repaint exterior, Rockwood, dark green, Renwick olive, and tricorn black, replace current rubber roofing with Flexicon rubber roof, and update fixtures. And 308-310 East Lynn Street, shingled roof, orange corning, slate stone gray. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Purnell.
I'll second to Clayton.
Clayton seconds. Any discussion? Singing on all those in favor of the motion to approve the work being done as listed for 203 North Allegheny, 136 South Water Street, and 308-310 East Lynn Street, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have for this meeting. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thanks.
We're going to be moving into current and old business.
Go ahead, Rita.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
First item here on the agenda is the Stover-McLachlan invoice of 3/21/22. Meeting minutes of 3/21/2022. Looking for a motion and approval of both.
Yeah, so what this was, this was from the meeting minutes of 3/21. I'll call for a correction and second for a motion for the correction and approval of the Stover-McLachlan invoice. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion, Clayton.
Clayton. Second.
Bernier.
Bernier. Discussion.
What was the correction on the?
Now, let me pass my gavel to Doug. And what that was, was I pulled, I pulled that invoice for a question.
Okay.
So the question was answered, but we didn't do anything. But at the end of it, we just moved on. I didn't take a motion or a second to approve the invoice. So that's basically what this is doing, and it's, and how it has been fixed on the, the agenda for 3/21/22. It would be the second motion that is amended that will approve right after this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated for the correction and approval of the Stover-McLachlan invoice, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That motion is approved. I'll call for a motion and second to approve the amended 3/21/22 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Tosty Basie.
Second.
Second, Dan. Discussion. Singing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. So the meeting minutes of the 7th, we had pulled some things. So I'm going to call for a motion and second to approve the corrected meeting minutes of March 7th. That was for the correction and approval. That was, I just did 3/21, I didn't do 7. We're, we're working on four different meetings.
Since it was my thing that held it up, I'll say, I'll do the motion.
Tasty Basie, second.
I'll second to Clayton.
Clayton. All those in favor of the approved and corrected meeting minutes of March 7th, 2022, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. I think that's it for that. Next, we have Borough Retirement Party scheduled for Thursday, June 9th at 2022, on 2022, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM in council chambers. Now, this is an FYI, there's no council action request.
Certainly, I certainly would like everyone's attendance. Due to COVID, there was about two years we were not able to recognize either borough, staff retirements, or members of council, or officials like the previous mayor who didn't run or whatever, left council for whatever reason. This is meant to lead to a little recognition of their service to the borough, whether employee or elected or what have you. We used to do it on an annual basis. Again, with COVID, we didn't do it for two years, so we're trying to get caught up, and that's the intent of this session. We split the time with our shift changes, primarily public works, wastewater treatment, police, the two to four range works pretty good. We can try to catch most people. So again, that's the logic behind the time and everything. But we greatly appreciate your attendance and should be a nice little ceremony.
Okay, looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, Chapter 575, zoning, Article 21, signs ordinance number 05022022-01. I'll call for a motion and second to approve the sign ordinance number 05022022-01 as amended. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Clayton, second.
Second.
Dan. Everybody's read it, all 150,000 pages.
It's a remedy.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you for having worked on that for two years. I appreciate that we have finally got it passed and moving forward.
Thank you.
Rob, you want to talk about the LERTA program?
As you know, LERTA program, just checking my notes here, the most recent action on the LERTA program is the Belfont School Board unanimously approved our identical ordinance. They did it through a resolution with our ordinance attached. That was done on April 26th, and of course, you know, we approved our ordinance on April 4th. The last body, taxing body to join us would be Center County Government. Tomorrow at their meeting, they're doing what they call a first read, and I give a little overview of the ordinance and the program. And then on May 17th, they have, they're planning to do their advertising like we would, and it'll be scheduled for action on May 17th. So after that, we would have a formal, full, complete LERTA program to offer here in the borough. So at this time, there's no action, but we're really making good progress.
Okay. Any questions? Singing on, we'll move into new business.
No, train station.
So the train station bid letters for midstate roofing and coating and Roman Works painting, there's no council action required. Anything to report on that?
I think we've issued everything.
We've issued, yeah, we have to wait on some performance bonds, but other than that, the work probably is tentatively scheduled to begin for the roof on September the 6th, and the painting will begin on September the 19th. We're trying to minimize the disruption down around the train station in the summertime.
And then we have RFP, paving bids were due Monday, May 2nd, 2022 at 3:00 PM. I'll call for a motion to allow staff to review, approve, and select paving bids.
No one's going to open them here. You can report the numbers if you'd like.
All right. This is Gleno Hall Baker. There's a number of streets. We are going to, I'll give you just the summary bids, so, and when I mention this, I want everyone to know that not all these streets will be paved, will, you know, we have a budget of $100,000, so what we'll try to do is maximize the funding that we have with the streets based on the two bids. So for Gleno Hall Baker, the first option is Sylvan Circle, $47,130. Option two was McLean Lane, $8,258. Option three, North McAllister Street, $62,706. Option four, South Ridge Street, $13,553. Option five, Parkview Boulevard, $27,852. Option six, Hepburn Street, $22,876. Option seven, Ardell Lane, $25,685. And option eight, Scott Lane, $17,285, for a total of $225,345.
Do you want to know if any of those streets are being repaved by Columbia Gas? Are you sure Ridge might be one?
That, I mean, Matt will know that.
How are you going to kind of break some of this down?
Yeah. The next bid is from HRI Incorporated. HRI's summary page is as follows. Option one, Sylvan Circle, $41,392.50. Option two, McLean Lane, $3,136.30. Option three, North McAllister Street, $55,068.60. Option four, South Ridge Street, $3,676.70. Option five, Parkview Boulevard, $22,244.40. Option six, Hepburn Street, $18,295.50. Option seven, Ardell Lane, $16,272. And option eight, Scott Lane, $11,274.30. The total is $171,360.30.
So you not with that motion?
Well, we'd like to have a motion where we go through the bid, and if everything is, all the bonds are there and everything, we would like to ward the bid based on being the low bidder, if everything's, you know, suffice. And then we would also work out which streets actually get paid based on their budget. That's what we're looking for.
So I'll call for a motion and second to allow staff to review, approve, and select paving bids and locations.
Yes, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Dan and Bernier.
Bernier. Any discussion?
Hi, I have a question. When we're going through these, some of the bids for some of the roads were lower on one and higher on the other. I think, just quickly scanning this, is it, if we're trying to maximize the amount of paving, would it be possible to kind of mix and match?
I don't think so. I think we got to take the total low bid number.
Okay, he's just trying to help as many people in the borough as possible.
With the rules, I think you got to take the low bid number.
Okay.
So, I couldn't write them down that fast. Is South and Rowan there?
No, it isn't, but.
That's the ones being revamped for the.
I think that would be covered by water at a separate project, a separate bidding.
They're also working on the gas there too. They aren't right now, but they will be, so. I don't know if that will affect that.
Hoping that it's taken care of before when repaving.
It's playing.
Thanks.
We might be able to incorporate it in with this project. We'll just pay for it out of a different fund.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Singing on, all those in favor to allow staff to review, approve, select paving bid and locations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is approved. That brings us to short-term rental draft ordinance as received from and recommended by Borough Planning Commission. I'll call for a motion and second to consider substantial changes to the draft ordinance. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion McKean.
I'll second to Clayton.
Second, Clayton. Discussion?
I just want to clarify, whatever is decided, we go back, we draft it and bring it back. There's not, that's the extent of it.
We're not approving anything.
We're not approving anything. You know, you still eventually have to have a public hearing, but that's, that's the direction, whatever happens.
Through our discussions tonight, you know, I have written some things down. If staff want to go through that and create that from there, or other, that might sense something, yeah? How do you want to do that?
Someone make a motion to that effect?
Well, we already got a motion to.
I mean, make some changes. We're looking to, you know, clarify what those.
Some direction, I think.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So take Randy's notes, incorporate Randy's notes, okay.
So would that be an amendment to the original?
Well, we're going to have to probably try to, yeah, definitely an amendment, but we're going to, we're going to redraft the draft, you know.
So it all gets really looked at again.
So what I'm asking is, it's a procedural thing. You initially, you accepted the initial motion to do substantial changes. Then Shawna said that you wanted, sounded like she was asking to amend that to include your notes.
Well, the issue is that we, nothing's written down during the work session, so the only thing that was written down was what I submitted, but we talked about a lot of that. Whether we use it or not is one thing, and it still has the same language in it as the proposed, but just some things moved around.
I think she's questioning the rule of order. It sounded like there was a motion made, we didn't vote on it, then there was amendment made, from what I heard. Correct me if I'm wrong. So she was on parliamentary procedure, are we following it? So however you want to adjust it is fine with me.
Well, we have an amendment by McKean.
I have a ask a question to.
One second.
Okay.
And I need a second for the amendment. Do I have that?
I'll second it. So for discussion.
So would any of the work done on the, this proposed ordinance include any of the offered help from the local group that just?
We'll get to that. I'm going to adjust that after we're done with this. This is just getting things, this is just getting things moved on to, we're making some significant changes, that's what it asks, and it'll come back to us, but I'll talk about what we want to do moving forward after we get these motions out.
So we're going to talk about that still this evening, is what you're saying? Okay.
Okay, so, the amendment, more discussion on the amendment.
You calling the question?
Yes. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment as stated to include my list on, on the substantial changes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That motion carries. And now that takes us back to the original motion, which was motioned by McKean and Clayton. I'll call for, all those in favor of the main motion to consider substantial changes to the draft ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion's approved. My thought is, I've had, received a lot of emails over the past few weeks, and, you know, we're burning a lot of time on work sessions, 45 minutes for the last, over the last, I think, three work sessions. And so what I would like to do is create an ad hoc committee to work with this new committee of short-term operators. I agree that it would be helpful in several ways, and we'll just have to, you know, they can come as a group, they can come as whoever can make it. We'll formulate a schedule, and our, our schedule will be based on what our committee can do, and hopefully that committee could also join, or some part of it, join that meeting that would be held here in council chambers. And that way, I think we can bring it back to each work session until we get it cleared up, but we're not going to be spending 45 minutes on it. We can move up, move some other things along. See you.
I have a question for clarification. Should we also reach out to homeowners that may be opposed to short-term rentals and ask them if they want to form their own committee to give input?
Well, I get what you're saying. I, for me, I would just like to get something on the books as to what we could have another public hearing to with a different ordinance. So I don't know. I don't know if it's worth.
I, I understand that, and I certainly feel as a zoning officer that I'm very happy to solicit input from both sides. I, I don't know that other municipalities have formed an ad hoc committee with short-term rentals to ask them to help craft their ordinance. I, and especially if we're doing that, and that is a very one-sided, that is a one, very one-sided view without then also soliciting input from short-term rental, I'm sorry, from homeowners that live in residential districts that maybe, may have concerns about short-term rentals. But now I'm cycling back to what you guys asked me to do a year ago, which was to create an ad hoc committee as diverse as it could be, which I, I think I did a good job of having a diverse group come together and create consensus where there could be consensus, and at least things to consider for amending.
If you have, if you have people already on a list that you can reach back out to that were on the committee, because it'd be nice to have people who are familiar with the discussions.
Yeah.
If we're going to do that. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just trying to, I would like to just, want to try to get something on paper, as I think everybody does at this point.
Sure, I guess my point, I, I would also want to, if I'm, if I'm collectively, if the staff is meeting with a group of STR people, like they have formed this committee on their own, and they want to sit down with members of, of the borough to help amend the ordinance, I don't, I think we should also include then homeowners that are concerned about short-term rentals to also sit at the table.
I just, I just said that. If you have somebody that wants to be on there that you've already worked with.
Okay. So I am creating another ad hoc committee to amend this ordinance.
There's going to be this committee. It'll be this ad hoc committee that I'm creating, that they'll be part of, when they come in, they'll be part of that committee.
Submit some names from the homeowners that you think would be fair. I think your point is very well taken. There should be advocates on both sides.
Okay.
Part of the discussion.
So you're forming a committee?
I'm forming an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Of council.
I will send you names.
And we're using this new committee that short-term rental owners have put together. I don't, everybody. I don't expect everybody to come, but I would expect at least the leadership of that to come. My anti, my thing is, not that they're gonna help us build, you know, make this, but I want to get some feedback in real time when we're talking about it, instead of working for hours every weekend, writing it down, putting it over, changing it, whatever, and then coming to a meeting, and we're not, we're still nowhere. So, I'm, I'm trying to do this so we can move it along, and hopefully get this thing done by this year.
Okay.
So, Randy, with this ad hoc committee and with the discussion we had earlier about getting legal review, how is that going to, how is that legal review going to fit in with your ad hoc committee?
Once we get the, the information together and council looks at it, then we can either make additional changes, but at the end, it'll go to legal. And when it comes back in legal, we'll see what legal says.
So, we're holding off on the legal?
I'm not gonna send one every week, no.
Okay.
It's gonna be one, hopefully one time. Or if we change it, then it might have to be a second. I don't want to break this.
You got two balls in the air.
It'll be, it'll be a little different than the way we run meetings before, but this is what, you know, this part of not having, you know, specialty committees.
Just trying to figure out the logistics. Will the ad hoc committee meet just at other times?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll put it, we'll have a doodle calendar, we'll have for the council members of the committee, and we'll, you know, we'll just have, that, the short-term rental committee or the residential committee will have to be able to meet that date if they want to come to that meeting. I'm not gonna try to get everybody's, oh, I can't make it, or I can't do this. It'll be council, ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Okay? Does that, you guys understand that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna be on my committee, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have you here in big D on A.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if anybody's interested, let me know. I'll get, let me know by the end of the week, and then I'll put it together and go from there, and get, talk to them on about a doodle calendar. All right, new business.
Want me to go over these?
I have them here.
Okay.
Nope, down and everything.
Okay, good.
So, at our last meeting, I had talked to Lori during, I guess it was the work session.
Yes.
About the number of budget items that she submits at that second meeting each month. And a lot of it is duplicated information. And so, in, in an effort to save some time and money and paper, I talked to, I talked to Lori, and basically what I want to do is call for a motion to keep the following financial reports. It'll be the budget versus actual, the budget versus, versus actual summary, the voucher summary, and the treasurer's report. So, the ones that will, and that's the ones that we'll keep. The ones that we're removing will be the general fund statement activity, the current versus prior, months to, what's that, what's the MT, year-to-date and months-to-date. And the GF budget versus actual. I think that was the ones that we took off. I know it wasn't. I don't think there's any stuck in here. I think we removed three and cut four. That's what I have. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Clayton?
Clayton makes motion, second?
Breneir, I'll second it.
Breneir. Okay, discussion. All those in favor of the motion to keep the following financial reports, budget versus actual, budget versus actual summary, voucher summary, and treasurer's report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. That motion carries. Here we go. I'm gonna call for a motion, and I'm gonna do it like I normally do, and that is to approve. Consider resolution number zero five zero two two zero two two dash oh one cannabis legislation. Call for a motion and second to approve the resolution. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second to Clayton.
I heard Clayton first. Discussion.
Curiosity question. This number is the same as the signed ordinance.
This would have to be...
One should be an ordinance.
This is a resolution.
Yeah, this is a resolution.
Okay.
Can I ask why we're getting involved in this? Because this sounds like something that's not really a Belfont Borough issue.
It was a letter sent, and when the letter sent, it gets in the, it's on the agenda. And so, the council would either vote yea or nay.
Do we have any information on what the adjacent municipalities are thinking along these terms, or the county level, or the state level? Because this...
The only thing we received was his letter and the whereabouts that they, that they, that Abbotstown and Adams County supported, and that's the same one that they gave us to sign, if we want to approve.
So, we have no idea what other municipalities may or may not be supporting this or...
I think, looking at the letter...
The intent is, you know, our delegates are gonna go to the annual borough conference and later this month, Arb and Doug, and it's going to be presented at the resolutions committee. And of course, they want to, they want to know, or maybe we want to know, what our delegates should do. And then, when it goes to the, the regular board meeting, business meeting, what do the delegates want to do?
Yeah.
So, we, we need direction from council, how you want us to vote.
Well, how do we decide that when we may not know how our community feels about that? Because I would be...
You have two meetings. You have tonight, and you have the next meeting before the annual business meeting. So, you, yes, that's all I can tell you is you have, we have two meetings before the annual congress. You could do nothing, or you could wait till the next meeting or do something tonight.
I would feel uncomfortable voting to approve that, just without any input.
Rita, maybe what we could do is have a motion to table with a request for staff to put this on the website for a vote at the next meeting to give the public a chance to weigh in on this.
I think our chief has some thoughts on this.
I would love to hear your chief on this.
Sean involved in this as well.
All right, so, basically what you need to do is educate yourselves. And as you said, Doug, you want to know which way to go. There's a good article of the Missouri State Medical Association put out, that's by Dr. Samuel Wilkinson. Okay, it goes through, it goes through about five pages of great information on, information about what two other states have experienced, what they thought they were going to gain, what they didn't gain, the actual health effects. We're not talking about your grandpap's marijuana. We're talking about marijuana that has a THC content of twenty times more than it had two decades ago. So, there are, there's a lot of, there's four main issues. The regulatory oversight issue, black market sales, the health, personal health and safety issues, and social safety and degradation of your society. And if you just look at that article, I think it'll, it'll give you some good direction.
Chief, can you send that to the council members?
Yes, I can. And I, I prepared a little bit of, of something, but, you know, I can send that off as well, too.
Sean, I read through this, and one of the things that, I actually talked to Tom about this, too, and he read this, too, the, about the expungement of criminal charges and judge, and judgments. The only thing that I would be concerned about is excluding felony charges where there was possession or in, or with intent.
Right. That would cause such a backlog in the court system. I see the state, and I don't know who would make that decision. If the borough has the authority to actually supersede, you know, the state, the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals. But when you look at things like misdemeanor charges and all the fine money, and how would they, I want to go back, what, seven years? There's no, I don't see it happening.
How do we?
How do you do that?
Right, how do you implement that? But there was concern about possession.
They might expunge him, but they're not gonna give the money back, I guarantee that.
Right, right, right. I think the, I, my take was there's a lot more to this than what we may want to do.
What are the implications of one municipality passing a resolution like this if the surrounding municipalities are not on board?
It creates, it creates some issues.
So, that would be another, we could reach out to springing better townships.
I'd like to know what the county, what the county is thinking, too, because it seems more of, you need a bigger area.
I mean, I'm reading this guy's letter. It's not really well done. And, you know, he says that his council has previously decriminalized cannabis in the borough through ordinance, giving a small fine for possession. What if he gets stopped by state troopers?
Right.
What if he gets stopped by federal agents who are following a huge load through, you know, I mean, this is, this, none of this even makes sense. Like, I can't believe we're talking about this. I really can't believe we're spending time on this. I, I don't even know what this guy's asking to do, but what he's proposing in this letter doesn't make any sense. It doesn't matter what Belfont Borough decides to do with small amounts of marijuana. If he goes out on ninety-nine and gets pulled over, it's still against the law.
We're trying to bring commerce into Belfont.
And I guess, I don't care what you, you know.
Well, I guess the main point is, is that the delegates, either going to, the delegate from Belfont Borough, the delegates are going to, and even if, even if, I guess, the boroughs association says it's okay to do, they still have to pass it through their own, I don't know what, what the big stamp of approval that the...
Change convictions.
Right now, yeah, right now we have a motion to table. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, I thought you made that motion.
No, I didn't.
I did.
We set that table out on spring.
We don't have a consensus tonight, then.
Well, what I'm saying is, we have a motion to table. There's really no discussion during a table. So, you either, either table it, or you don't table it, and we go back and vote on the main motion. Either up or down.
Not talk about it again, up or down?
The, the motion I made was to table it till the next meeting, to get further input.
But that's what I'm saying, if...
Can we vote to not bring it up again? And what's all the other stuff that we can talk?
If we turn, if we turn down the table, then we go back to the main motion.
Then we go back to the main motion of, do we support it or not, a recommendation.
And then, if you want to have a permanent table, you can make a second motion to permanently table.
I say let's vote on this again.
So, we're gonna vote on ta, on the table? Let's have a roll call vote.
Just make sure everybody's clear, they're voting on the table.
On the table.
Which, which means that if it's rejected, then we go back to the original motions of whether we're gonna consider...
Up or down, and we go back to the main motion.
Okay.
Stop doing this.
So, what do you need now?
I'm gonna, like, you're gonna do a roll call vote, starts with me, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna vote down to tabling it. Let's go back to the original, right? So, my vote is no.
And then, whatever, if you want to keep the table, you vote yes.
Okay.
So, you're voting yes to table, no, not to table.
And then, if you want, if the no table, you're gonna take up this issue tonight, is how we're gonna do it.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Breneir? Mr. Brackville?
No.
Ms. Clayton?
No.
Ms. Dan?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
How much money can we make? No, I, sorry. You have to lighten up sometimes, but I vote no.
Ms. McKean?
No.
Ms. Purnell?
No.
Ms. Cedric?
No.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Since I made it, yes.
The noes have it eight to one.
Okay, that now takes us back to the main motion. And again, this is a yes to approve and a no to not approve. Call, again, is the motion to approve the resolution to, to consider resolution number zero five zero two two zero two two dash oh one cannabis legalization. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Can we have a further discussion before we do that?
Sure, we can.
So, my, my only thought is, I'm not sure, I think what this resolution is trying to say is, would you be willing to have Doug as a delegate go to PSAB and vote yes, which then means PSAB would then go forward, and if it passed, to lobby the legislature to continue work on legalizing marijuana. It is not us locally legalizing.
Well, we're sending our delegate. I don't want to vote yes to sending our people to go do this when we have everything else that we have.
It's just to clarify.
I mean, that's a huge time-consuming thing. So, I thought we were gonna roll call vote to not, not do.
I was asking for discussion.
You have to let, maybe others want to discuss, so Joanne wanted to discuss it.
So, basically, what I was basically saying is that, what I heard a lot of you saying is that this was saying that Belfont was going to decriminalize marijuana. And that is not what this is saying. It is saying that if we think it's a good idea, we would have Doug go to the PSAB and vote to say that he thinks that PSAB should be lobbying for this purpose. That's all.
Yes.
Okay, my comment is, we should be lobbying, as much as I don't like it, for our local police to have radar. I think that's more important than, you know, just at this time. But, yeah, I, I think I'm gonna vote no.
Well, I mean, and in the guy's letter that he presented to us, he's, he's, he's presenting to us that, hey, look at us in Abbotstown, we decriminalized, and he's asking us to do the same thing. Well, I have no, he is. He's asking us to vote like he did and send him, say, hey, we did the same thing, so they can all go down to this big thing and say, look at how many of us decided to decriminalize it. And I'm just saying, we could probably all come up with two or three things that our neighbors would rather have us working on with Doug and, and our other delegates, to go to wherever they go, Grand Poo Paul Lodge, and decide on things that we all got elected to do, which is not this.
It's a Belfont water quarry, we're all going up there.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Sign none. All those in favor to consider resolution number zero five zero two two zero two two dash oh one cannabis legalization, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay?
Nay.
That motion carries, so that kills that request. Just one up and smoked. Next, we have a resolution number zero five zero two two zero two two dash oh two. It's recognizing Tom Zilla for his years of service of center region planning and the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I would be happy to make that motion to Thompson.
Motion by Doug Johnson. Motion by Clayton. Discussion.
He retired on Friday.
He retired on Friday. Don and I stopped by his little celebration on, I believe it was Thursday. Very nice. He's a very nice person. He's gone out of his way for Belfont. We're sorry to see him go, and hopefully we stay in touch with him. He's a real, real nice person.
Working with Tom, with Nittany Valley Planning Committee, he was very helpful. There's a lot of things that came up and we're working on, and helped us, I guess about a year or two ago, we redid the, I can't think of the term of it, the areas of Nittany Valley.
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan. Thank you. And he was very helpful in that.
I, I had the extreme pleasure of only knowing Tom for about four years, but his patience with questions of all on the MPO are just fantastic. He spent thirty-two years with the MPO and the county, and he's, he's just a great guy to work with on the MPO. I will miss him and his support of this borough. But I will... him and his support of this borough. But I will say, not to take away from Tom, but we do have a new appointee for Tom on the M P O. His name is James Saylor. He's actually a Balfont native. He moved away from the area, but he's now back in State College. He served as a Transportation Planning Program Director for the CDA COG M P O, which provides transportation planning services for an eight-county area of Center County. Jim led the development of unified planning work programs, long-range transportation plans, strategic plans, transportation improvement programs. He's worked a lot with PennDOT Engineering in District Two. So he, Tom is almost not replaceable, but I think we have a good person taking his place to look forward to working with. And Ralph and I met with him for, and Tom, for about an hour and a half, and he's really excited about the, the things happening in Balfont.
Yes. Any other discussion? Sign no. All those in favor of the resolution for Tom Zilla, Number 0502202-02, for his years of service with the Center Region Planning and Metropolitan Planning Organization, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Tom, if you're out there looking tomorrow night or Wednesday. Next, we have a Balfont awarded 10 dot transportation alternative project grant in the amount of $325,000 for work on Spring Street and West Bishop Street, streetscape improvements. There's no council action on this. And the next one we have is Balfont awarded D E P 902 recycling grant in the amount of $310,070 for Musser Lane composting projects. And I think a lot of credit goes to Mr. Holton.
Yes. He's gonna expect this every meeting.
Only if we bring in $700,000.
So I would like to also thank Don, and I looked over the list of all the different grants. We were the fifth highest grant in the state.
Very nice.
Pretty nice.
Next, we then we have consideration items for goals to consider. I had on here for this May 16th work session. Joanne sent me some items that I'm gonna look at putting on there that seem to make sense if we can fit them on. And hopefully, since we'll have a different process for that work session, once we get that ad hoc committee going and get that set up, we may not, we may kind of just kind of break away from discussing that at that work session. Give us more time. So if you have anything, just email to me, and I'll get it, share it with Ralph and Don and Doug and Kent, and see how we can fit that on. Next up is public comment regarding items not on the agenda. If somebody's out in the audience tonight and you want to speak about an item not on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thanks. I think some of my compatriots spoke earlier on the S T R issue that you folks addressed briefly, and I think correctly in your meeting, so bravo, bravo. My name's Barry Croker, 191 East Curtain Street in Balfont. We moved in 2015. It's a lovely Victorian home. Moved out some houserville, and State College scraped up enough money to pick up the old place, 1891. We love it. We're having a lot of fun making it better. And I thought I had just bought a beautiful Victorian home, but I learned that I had actually brought, bought a threat to the health, safety, and general welfare of homeless residents, families, neighbors, neighborhood, sense of community, and quality of life here in Balfont. So I was horrified to hear that. That's a pretty volatile assertion in that, in that draft ordinance, and I think it speaks to the intent of the ordinance very clearly, which is really kind of a taking. It's a legal taking of my private property rights, and I'm very concerned about it. I moved to Balfont intending to do some rental of the home. I thought maybe if we do well at the short-term rental, we might try bed and breakfast. It's part of a long, long-term income plan for our livelihood and staying in Balfont and helping make it a beautiful place. So I got a vested interest in seeing revisions of this document. And I just wanted to let you know that I'm a small-time operator with that. I do maybe two, if I'm lucky, more than that, maybe up to seven weekends a year. These are folks who come in, they shop at our stores, they walk around and enjoy our parks. They're interested in Penn State football, and the quality of life we have here, and they're not running around doing things that maybe they do in downtown State College, but these aren't the kind of folks who rent with me. So I just wanted to kind of put a face on the S T R thing, and no horns or tail or anything. Just, I would like to see this draft ordinance substantially revised, and I thought your motion was great. So, thank you very much. I love the opportunity to work with any one of you or with this ad hoc committee as well. We have a great staff. I feel like the Balfont S T Rs have been underrepresented in the process to date. Maybe not intentionally, but just encourage. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Yes, we do have one. Randy, I'm gonna give myself three minutes as well. I want to show council, as everybody knows, we have been, you know, we've talked about this crosswalk issue, safety issue downtown. The crosswalks that we're planning on putting in around the diamond will occur probably sometime in late May, early June. That's the schedule for it. But in addition, we looked at some additional lighting. Craig Harold, the borough's electrician's been, you know, trying to get the materials, has been really difficult. But this is our current lamppost here. We would like council members to look over the next couple weeks, when you get a chance, at night, down by the Y M C A Faith Center. This is a, this is the new bulb here that we're kind of proposing. There's two options, this one and this one here. What we would do, or what we're thinking about, would be to replace the lamppost, probably about 25 of them, in these blocks right here. So it would be High Street and Water Street, High Street and Spring Street, up around the diamond, Howard and Allegheny, and Bishop and Allegheny. So what we would do is just the four lampposts around the crosswalks to just provide that additional light. So if you get a chance to check these two out and come back with any feedback at the next meeting, we would appreciate it.
So do you have both of them on every corner, or just?
There's only two, there's one sample of each.
These are just samples.
Option two, you see above the picture, is a frosted globe. You can't see through the globe. It's near the Faith Center corner of the lower crosswalk across West High Street.
Yeah.
Option one is over by the formal Y M C A.
The brownstone side.
Brownstone side.
They're at the new crosswalk.
The new crosswalk. We're just trying to.
They're opposite each other.
Opposite, pretty much opposite. But yes, right along that crosswalk that's been lowered or moved closer to the Y M C A. So option one, option two, look at them. You could, after the meeting, walk through there, drive through there, and take a look at them. Give us your feedback.
You stop the crosswalk, there's a pedestrian or not. Look to one side and look to the other.
Be careful.
This one here, this, the option one produces a little more light, and it, and it seems to come down, so it would be, you know, and it would match the other ones aside from what you see in the center there.
Sure.
Are they both going these?
I'm not sure that they are, Joanne.
So they're gonna think of the energy.
It's a little bit more. We already know that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, I'll call for adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Vacy, do I have a second?
Bernier.
Bernier. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion through. We are adjourned at?
Eight fifty-seven.
Eight fifty-eight.